Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 9 special meeting. It was called by the Board of Trustees for reconsideration of the Board's previous action on trustee districts. As we start all meetings, I'd ask you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me kind of take a few minutes here to hopefully outline the protocol for this evening's meeting. This is, as I indicated, a meeting to address the request by the Board for reconsideration of a prior motion by the Board. At the last public meeting that we had, we had a report from the Chair, myself, about the outcome of an earlier meeting that had been called in between sessions. That earlier meeting had been called in order to address the legislature's requirement that we create districts or zones for the five trustees within the taxing district. That was a meeting that was called in between regular meetings because of certain timing issue. This bill was signed into law on March 25, I think. By the time I got back, I was on vacation, it was April 10. We started looking around for what needed to be done. The bill requires that we have these five districts established by July 1. In order to do that, we have to have a plan created and sent to the State Board of Education for their approval. And their meeting is on, I think, June 23. They have to have an agenda in by May 13, I think it was. 16? Yeah. And so it gave us between the 10th of April and May 16 to have it all ready. And one of our Board members was going to be out of town for that meeting. So I was trying to do all this in a short timeframe, getting the zones drawn and then having the zones engineered. They have to have engineering description of the lines and everything that we see on the zones. So that put us in a position of having this meeting in between normal meetings. And at that meeting, a resolution or a motion was made to adopt his own proposal. There were two, well, there were two proposals that had been fleshed out so that they were actual proposals with population density descriptions according to what the statute requires. There were four other proposals that came up on the day of the meeting that did not had not been run through any kind of population density calculation to establish the zones. And the zones have to be established based upon equal or as close to as equal as reasonable population. So we had two proposals that were, let's say, fleshed out, and they are what's up there as Proposal A and B. And at that meeting, Proposal B was adopted. And then at the regular meeting that we had, during my report, I reported that, and we had responses from ASNC, and we had responses from the Faculty Assembly, that they wanted to have that reconsidered. And so at the last meeting, by a vote of the Board, we agreed to generate a meeting so that the actions, that action of the Board could be reconsidered. There's two steps to doing that. We have not, as a Board, yet agreed to reconsider that vote. What we did was we agreed to have this meeting. So the first order of business is for this Board to have a motion made, seconded, and passed, that we actually have a reconsideration. If there is, if we don't vote to reconsider it, then we all go home right now, because there's nothing further to do. If that motion carries, then we will have a discussion on reconsidering the motion to adopt B. That procedure would include public comment. We invite public comment in most of our meetings. You've signed up, those of you who wish to do that have signed up, and we will afford you an opportunity to make public comment. And the rules on the public comment are this. Your comments should be restricted to three minutes, and nobody's going to pull the hook out and drag you off the podium if you're up there for three and a half minutes, but maybe at four minutes, I don't know. But try and make your comments succinct, to the point. Try and make them constructive, something that would help the Board in its deliberations and its discussion about this motion. And your comments have to be restricted to the agenda item. The only item on the agenda is reconsideration of the Board's decision with regard to zoning. After the public comment, then it really depends upon the Board making a motion to either consider A or consider B or consider some other alternative. We're here to consider that decision that we made, and there are no limitations on what that reconsideration might involve, but it has to be with regard to the trustee zones and getting a trustee zone map completed. So that's essentially what the protocol would be for this evening. And so, given that, I would invite the Board, if anyone wants to make a motion, with regard to whether or not we should continue this meeting, to reconsider.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to reconsider the prior motion and vote of the NIC trustee zoning map.
Is there a second?
My second is it.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, and we will proceed with the meeting and the reconsideration. All right. Now, the matter before this Board is a discussion of reconsidering the Board's prior decision, and that would include not only potentially endorsing and staying with that motion or alternative motions. So I leave it to the Board.
Mr. Chair, will we have public comment first?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we need to have public comment on that. So I hope everybody understands the nature of the public comment. We really appreciate, quite frankly, your coming forward with comments. And if you have a public comment, I'm going to call the names off as they appear on the list here. If you'd go up to the podium and give us your comments.
Name. They have to give us our name when they do their comments.
Yes. So the first one is Sean Collins.
Mr. Chair, as before Sean speaks. Could I address the fact that the maps now, the two choices, have been on the web and have been out and available more to the public than we first time, which is why we have this extra time, so we could get that information out?
Thank you. Sean?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members, President Dunlap, President's Cabinet, and other guests here tonight. I just have a few remarks here about the zoning issue. I had the opportunity to continue my research on the subject, and the plan voted on and approved defeats the intent of the law, in my mind. The intent of this law was to make it so underrepresented areas like Rathrum, unincorporated county territory, and Post Falls had more representation when it came to the NIC Board. Plan A proposed does a good job of giving Rathrum that representative and other unincorporated county territory. The second map fails in this regard, which was approved. Please keep in mind, when you make the choice tonight, about which map you plan to vote on, that not to worry where the Board members reside currently, because will that matter in 30 years? Instead, choose what's best for taxpayers of Cootney County, best for NIC, and gives the fairest representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Nils Rosenthal. Rosendahl.
Well, I wanted to give a point from the retired instructor's point of view. I haven't seen a lot of these people for six years. They look a lot older. I did research this a little bit, and my concern, the first question I had was, when were these maps drawn up? Since Bill Richards did the map A, I was concerned that this might have been 20 years ago, but I found out it was just done this March, and so it is a very recent map. Therefore, it's legitimate, and I don't think there should be any gerrymandering on this issue. Stick with what was originally proposed. Thank you.
Pat Leppard.
Chair Howard, Board, President Dunlap, staff, faculty, and all interested persons. I'd like to thank the Board, especially Chair Ken Howard, for calling this meeting to reconsider its decision regarding the creation of its election zones. I would also like to thank the Board for this chance for public comment. I have to tell you that this issue came late to my attention, as the meeting, it seems, was not well-publicized and public comment was not sought out. It also came late to my attention, because I'm an elderly person and I'm almost retired. After 26 years, I retire in three days. But even with one foot in retirement firmly, this issue and this moment are worthy of my attention and respect, and our attention and respect. North Idaho College has long been a place where in education, ideas are honored and principles practiced to the best of our ability. It is and is to be an example to the rest of the community. It is and is to be a place where an interest in fairness and the spirit of the law is first, to the point where the interests we each may have must be second to this moral mission. In my judgment, the decision of our previous meeting as to zonal boundaries fell short of this standard, and I would ask then that the first zonal proposal, which was blind to incumbent residents and fairest in terms of population distribution, be reconsidered for approval. To accept this first proposal would put us on a par with the other community colleges of Idaho, who approve zone boundaries essentially in the same manner as our first proposal. I thank you for your time. Interest and action that are moral and matters that matter to our community are always important. They are long-term, and they accrue to the advantage of future generations, whom we in education and political life should always consider to be of the greatest weight. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Next one is Russ McCain. Russ?
Russ McCain, I think I have to say my name. I don't really know anything about this, don't really care, to be honest, but I know a lot of kids that have done a very good job in their young lives with your technical training, the welding courses and electric courses, things like that. And I just want to thank you guys for your efforts in that matter. I think it's a good thing, you've done a good job at it. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Russ. Michelle Leppard.
Chairman Howard, President Dunlap, trustees, interested people, I bet you're surprised to see me up here voluntarily. As a citizen of the county and as an elected official with over 17 years of experience on at the Post Falls School Board, I'm asking you today to faithfully exercise your duty as a Board. Elected Boards ought to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. The decision to engage in incumbent gerrymandering may be legal, but it is ethically embarrassing. The intent of the law was to ensure that all parts of the taxing district are equally represented and that clusters of trustees from one specific area were to be avoided. The zone map approved at the May 18 meeting does not provide for representation of the Rathrum Prairie or Rathrum. Trustees Nielsen and Banducci both live in a narrow area that is bordered by Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene. Elected Boards ought to be held to the highest ethical standard. Manipulating boundaries to serve a specific agenda fails to meet that standard. I implore you to act within the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Brent Regan.
Good evening, I'm Brent Regan, Mr. Chairman and Trustees. Thank you for taking my comments. Actually, I would like to begin with a question, and that is, if the map A is adopted and the two trustees are co-cantinated in the same district, what happens?
I'll tell you what, we're going to cover that during the course of the meeting, so I hope to answer that question for you during the course of the meeting.
All right. So I have two salient points with that regard. First of all, the trustees were elected to perform a service, a course of duty, and that needs to be preserved. You can't go against the vote of the people by changing lines on a map halfway through the process. Second, if you look at the data that's on the charts, down in the right-hand corner, there's talking about a population distribution, and one is a little more even than the other, and they're both lies. And the reason they're both lies is because this data, if you look in the lower-left-hand corner, is based on 2010 census data. Now, this is 2016. So those are estimates, and as the estimates go forward in time, the accuracy is going to diminish, because the certainty of that goes down. So to sit here and argue, well, it's half a percent this way or half a percent that way, is folly. We don't know if it's 2% or 5% off from what the original was. So you do have actually a reasonable thing that you can do, and that is adopt something that looks, the one you've adopted, looks just fine. The distributions are within any reasonable respect proportional. When you get new data in 2020, you can take another look at the districts and see if they need to be adjusted then, based on sound data. If you're saying that we need to adjust it for proportionality at this point, you're blowing smoke, because you don't know. That data is six years old. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Culberth.
School Board, I just want to first make a comment to what Brent said, and that is true, these figures are incorrect. As a realtor, I can tell you that many changes have occurred in the real estate field in the past six years. Mr. Banducci and Mr. Nielsen have done an excellent job in bringing some accountability to this Board. An attempt to politically gerrymander to get rid of one of these people is inconscionable. Keep your politics and political correctness out of the education system.
Thank you. John Condon.
Evening. My name's John Condon, and I think I would echo those remarks. I would ask that the Board base their decisions based on practical matters and not politicize the proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to mispronounce this. Jay? Thank you.
Well, I can echo, echo. Mr. Chairman and Trustee, I can speak as open as Ms. Brent does, but I would just ask you to keep your word. A decision was made. I don't understand why we're here. I really don't. When you are just an outsider in the community looking at this, it feels like there's an agenda, and we like the accountability on the Board right now. And I would just ask that you stick by your word. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the people who have signed up for public comment. And so now we'll move into the portion of the meeting where we're going to actually take discussion from the Board and potential motions with regard to this issue. Before we do that, I'm going to ask Mark Lyons, the attorney for the Board, to sort of outline, so that everyone has a sense of what the statute is requiring of us, what the methodology is for setting up these zones, and any legal requirements there might be or considerations. So, Mark?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This new statute maybe isn't perhaps the most clearly-written statute, but I think I can lay out for you what it was intended to do. The Board's responsibilities were to divide the district into five trustee zones. Now, under the statute, those zones are supposed to be, and I'm quoting now, "as nearly equal in population as practicable," end quote. The other thing the Board needs to do is assign one trustee's position to each zone. Now, keep in mind that a current trustee of this Board does not need to reside in the zone to which that trustee's position is assigned. The trustee can complete, every trustee can complete their term. So the Board has to assign a trustee position to a zone, and it's also important to keep in mind that these zones are not voting zones. In other words, the people in the zone do not elect a trustee from that zone. Trustees, regardless of which zone they reside in, are elected by the entire county, the entire district. Now, it comes up that, what if? What if every trustee resides in each of the five zones? No problem, and we move forward. What if two or more trustees reside in the same zone? Then the procedure that we use, that we would have to use, is if two or more reside in a zone, the trustee with the most time remaining in the term is the one who is assigned to that zone. Now, if the terms, the same amount is, if the terms remaining are the same, then the next layer you would go to is, who is the most senior trustee, meaning presumably, which one has been a trustee longer than the others, or other one or other more? If there's no difference in seniority, then it falls to the remainder of the Board sitting without the trustees, who reside in the same zone, to vote to designate the trustee for that zone. And that means that the one who is not designated then becomes the trustee for a zone in which they do not reside. So that's what happens under this statute if two trustees reside in the same zone. Now, the subject of gerrymandering has come up here over the last number of weeks, and let me just say a few things about gerrymandering. Typically, gerrymandering is the creation or manipulation of a voting district, typically a bizarrely shaped voting district, and you've seen perhaps examples of this where they look like snakes. Gerrymandering originally comes from Boston, where a mayor at the time, last name Jerry, proposed a district for some partisan reasons that some reporter thought looked like a salamander, and he called it a gerrymander. So that's where that word comes from. Now, examples could be redrawing district boundaries. Typically, we're talking about voting district boundaries to favor a particular political party, or a candidate, or an incumbent. Now, keep in mind that gerrymandering on itself, even if you have this bizarrely-shaped district, is not necessarily illegal. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled in a number of redistricting cases, and generally, you can say, generalize, that partisan gerrymandering that discriminates against an identifiable political group, or that harms a racial or ethnic minority group, is illegal. That's typically what these cases on gerrymandering deal with. Bipartisan gerrymandering, which has been called that, bipartisan to protect incumbents of both parties is legal under the federal constitution and the federal statutes, including the Voting Rights Act, as long as it does not illegally discriminate by harming ethnic or racial minority groups. So if you look into this, that's what you'll find. Redistricting also often has to follow some state requirements, because it's not all federal. Some states have enacted specific statutes on what happens in redistricting and how do you, what criteria you have to apply and how that happens. Idaho does not have a statute that deals with trustee zoning issues, these zones. The closest thing that I suppose Idaho has is a statute that governs congressional and legislative redistricting. Now, that statute sets criteria for drawing districts, and for example, I won't go through all of them, because there's a number of them, but the ones that are, I think people can relate to, try to preserve communities of interest and traditional neighborhoods when you're drawing zones. That makes sense. Use U.S. Census population data. That makes sense, because as one commentator said, that's the data. And one thing that you cannot do under the statute to draw a legislative voting district is you cannot divide a county to protect an incumbent or a party. Now, this last part is important, I think, in understanding this issue. It's important to avoid gender-mandering, if you want to call it that, this redistricting voting, in voting districts to protect a particular incumbent. Now, arguably, that's not what happened here. I understand people's concerns, I'm just trying to give you the law on this. The concern doesn't necessarily apply here, because we're not, nobody has drawn the district to protect a, you know, to create a voting district. Each of the trustees here was elected by the county as a whole, the entire district, for North Idaho College. So I understand people's concern about it. Does it make it easier? Does it create an issue on trustees running against each other? Yes. Is it illegal under the law? No, the one that was passed. It is a policy issue for this Board and for this community to deal with. So from a legal standpoint, I've given you kind of what the law requires of the Board. You understand, I hope, a little bit more on what gerrymandering is. It is manipulating a district to protect an incumbent, but typically, that's for a voting situation. So anyway, that's basically the laws I see it, and I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Ron, you got a question or a comment?
Comment, please. First of all, is that this came to our Board of Directors about six or eight weeks ago, talking about a House bill, and I don't even know what it was called at the time, House Bill 512, Mark. So this House Bill 512 came to us, and as we read through it, we get our Board packets, we read through it, we digest it, and that bill was pretty simple. It was a way to take a geographical territory and divide it equally, so that the people that were voting for an elected official had an opportunity to choose from every geographical area. We have one county, but we have many cities, and when you talk about representation from Athol, and you talk about representation from Rathrum, as Sean put through there, we agree with you, Sean, is we need to have proper representation. And what we did is, the only two people on this Board that voted to support that were Todd and I, because we agree in the democratic system that says that's what we need to do. We fought a battle there, and you will find out that every other community college voted against that. But remember that the Senate passed this bill, supporting all three of our senators, and the House passed it with all six of our legislators at the House. This went at a 97% legislative vote to support this. The people that we vote for to represent us, they voted that we should have cross-county representation. So when you do that, you say, well, this is a good opportunity to make sure that we do this. And on behalf of myself and my family and for us that have received these letters, thank you for the nice, kind letters that you sent. It's always interesting to read letters from the public of what they're accusing you of doing. When you see it from your side, you say, I guess they just don't know the whole story. And so, I would like to take the few minutes just to explain to you, when you write things like that, say, and they wrote, out of the five letters, I took a highlight to these, unethical choices, unethical integrity, unethical standards, unethical concerns, deliberate manipulation, narrow and selfish, cover your A double S, I mean, I'm thinking, what is this? Self-centered, accused of being dishonest. Who in the F would do something like that represents this? And your actions are unethical, embarrassing, you manipulated the boundaries. And as I look at that, I say, whoa, 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 hold on a second. Where would they think that this was a political move? And as I look at this, four of those five letters that I just recited you were from people that represent the Kootenai County Democratic Club. So, we don't want to make it political, it just became political. But you need to understand is, the first map that was presented to us looked to me like there was a consideration that could be made for gerrymandering. And when you look at this map, the first map, where it was gerrymandered, in my opinion, was around my territory, where they took me, and this, if you look at this, it looks like a salamander with its head cut off, which is a terminology that they use in this political, is why would you come down and pick this up? So, my first reaction before we went to the Board was, I see something wrong with this. It looks like you're trying to protect me by putting me in this district, and keeping me from having to compete with another one of my fellow members. What they said was, is, well, we need cross-representation, whatever. And I said, well, first of all, you don't understand it. Todd does not live in the city of Post Falls. Todd Banducci lives in the unincorporated part of Post Falls, and is not even eligible to vote in Post Falls. So, when you think that we are now pushing this up, this is his territory and his responsibility. Remember that four of our five trustees did not get a chance to see this map until we had a chance to discuss this. When we saw this, we went back and we said, hold on a second. I think that you need to look at this a little bit different, because it appears that we have done this thing that they, they're so afraid that we would do as a Board, which is, we would gerrimander, create a salamander, and go out and reach somebody, and somebody could misinterpret that. We looked at, the purpose of this was to have equal representation by equal number of population, and that's what we accomplished by doing this, by moving a simple line. No gerrymandering, no political aspect at all. When this map was drawn up by a faculty member here, nothing against a faculty member, the faculty member's probably really good at this. But when I talked to the State Board of Education, and I talked to the two people, Blake Yode and Tracy Bent, the first thing they says, they've never, ever had an electoral map ever drawn up by a school district, which means they would suggest that we go back and have an independent person draw this up, and nothing against the person that draw that up, but it creates a potential element for maybe a conflict there. So, as I look at this, according to what they're saying at the State Board of Education, that what we follow here and we eliminate this, we accomplished this in our second map, which was to clarify this, so that we didn't pin one Board of Trustee member against another without any political ramifications. And I believe that we did that as honest and as ethical as we have. And I stand on my reputation here for every vote I've ever made for this institution, and what I've done. And when somebody sends me these letters that challenge my integrity, challenge my honesty, and do that, I'm offended. Thank you.
Any other comments? Judy?
This is a comment, this is a motion?
Okay.
Because then we can speak to the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move we adopt Plan A.
I'd second that motion.
And now, I'd like to speak to it? I asked, voted last time, to be sure that, and we all agreed, we wanted to meet again, because we do need to hear comments from you all, from our fellow Board members. I learned more information about what the law said from when I first discovered it, discussed it at the last meeting. That was, the law says we need to create five districts, that hasn't changed anything, that we need to use a GIS system, that the district zones need to be nearly equal, that we need to use legal descriptions to establish them. A new piece of information for me was the fact that we're going to use a 10-year census, and that's the only time the boundaries can be drawn. So, in four years, three for the census, and a year to get it figured out and redrawn, we'll have a new opportunity to look at districting. The same issue will happen 17 years from now, because the numbers won't be the same as they are when we draw the zone. I wish it weren't 10 years in between, because I see growth happening more rapidly than that. But those were the parameters under which I did my thinking, and what the legislature said we should be thinking about. I too appreciate the letters, I found some of them, I think were based on inaccurate information, and some language that I would do without next time. So, my criteria for suggesting we adopt Plan A was, follow the law. We did get the most maps posted, and we, as a Board, wanted to have more time for folks to see the maps on the web, have more public input, which I appreciate taking time to do tonight. Another criteria for me, fellow Board members, was that the zones have a bit of urban and a bit of rural, that they not be singular population. That another criteria we talked about last time was try and keep the communities together as much as we can. And that worked for me in Plan A, except for Coeur d'Alene. And I don't see that that'll ever change, because Coeur d'Alene is so large, we're always going to need to dip into it to get our population, at least at this time. And I suspect as Coeur, Post Falls grows, that will cause some reconfiguration three years from now when we look at the next census. So, I think the communities in Zone 5, which is the Rathram area, one of the rapid-growing areas, needs to be kept together. As I look at the other zones, they're all, Zone 1 has a lot of rural area in it, so we dipped into Coeur d'Alene to get some population base. Zone 2, there on Plan A, is the same phenomenon. Lots of rural area, but also then a touch into Coeur d'Alene. Zone 4 has some of the Rathram Prairie on it. Again, you'll see it around, around the Lake of Hayden Lake, provides some urban area in the community of Hayden, but also rural area. And then Zone 5 has rural area and the communities of, particularly Rathram, Spirit Lake areas. So, I think Plan, Plan A is the best way to meet the criteria we have before us at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Christie.
I'd like to revisit some of the statements that you made at the last Board meeting.
Do you have to?
Sure. What you had referred to under the Board discussion, you had talked about how the maps came about. And the first map that you had drawn up, you did so because we were required to get, get a map done, get it to the State Board. And so, you had our GIS specialist at the college formulate that map with no knowledge whatsoever of where the trustee residences were. And our sister institutions essentially used that same technique. No knowledge of trustee residences is, is supposed to be a map that was pure, had the population map, it was an integrity-based map. After you distributed that map to the trustees, it became quite clear that two trustees were going to reside in the same zone, and that became a kind of a, an issue, what became an issue, where they would have to run against each other, which is not a comfortable thing. All the trustees are here because they want to be, they've been voted in by the county residents, and so it's not comfortable. And both myself, you, and trustee Meyer were very much against this, this law as it was being formulated. We were very vocal, we said, this is what's going to happen, we don't like it, it's not necessary for Kootenai County. But we didn't prevail on that. So, here we are, we're stuck with this law. So, once that map was done, and I will say that the population zones were, you know, less than 1% variance, it was a near-perfect map, with, again, the integrity built into it. Trustee Banducci and trustee Nielsen did not see the map in the same regard. And so, from what I understand from, from your statements, is they were upset by this, and you went back and asked the GIS coordinator to redo the map, moving the line, which would now put each trustee in a zone. So, there would be no issue come election time about anybody having to run against each other. And so, that, that's the very definition of incumbent gerrymandering. Now, while that's true, it's not illegal, I think we're faced with a bigger issue of how ethical is it? And what's public perception? What was the intent of the law, which I did not support? I didn't like it, I still don't like it. But what was the intent of it? I, when I was Board Chair, a few times now, I spent, had quite a few interesting conversations with our former representative Frank Henderson. This statute was something that he championed for years. I never agreed with him on it, but it meant a lot to him. He really wanted to see that trustees were not clustered in a particular area. He really wanted to give Post Falls, Rathram, Hayden Lake, all of them, an opportunity to bring forth their own candidate to serve on the trustee, NIC Board. So, I think if we go back to what is written in the law, what was the intent behind it, there's really no way around that Plan B that we had done around the incumbents is not what the intent of the law was. It doesn't have anything to do with how good all of us are, or how hard we work for the Board. It has to do with what we're mandated by the state. I would tell you that there's no reason for us to partake in gerrymandering. There's nothing pressing that is making us do that. And I, public perception does matter. How we make decisions, the process that we go through, our ethics that are challenged, all of that does matter. And so, I would encourage the Board to go back to the original map and adopt it, because it's the clean map with no knowledge of trustee residences.
Well, I guess it's appropriate that I speak next. My first comment is, I find it very disappointing that fellow Board members felt they need to use the various media outlets as their platform, and that there were a number of accusations and misinformation and disinformation that was distributed. It's become very political and very personal. I find it very interesting that I've been labeled as not happy when I had no response to the initial map. Actually, I was rather reserved about it, but that's been attributed to me incorrectly. I would like to point out a few things, if I may. I'll go back to the legislation itself. As I've brought up before, Mark Browning has counseled us and given us his opinions many times, especially the last couple of years, when we've had a lot of funding hanging out in the legislation. And Mark has counseled us on at least two occasions, one being the concealed carry on campus, and then again on the zoning, that they were done deals, that we probably should not take a position, or do even do a vote, and not offend anybody down in the legislature to possibly jeopardize some of the funding that we were trying for. Now, I heeded Mark's advice both times. And then Mark also reiterated that when he and I were at the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce listening to Dwight Johnson speak, and then talking in the group. I'm sorry, Mark, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but reminded again to those assembled that he had advised the Board to not take a position and to not vote on this. So, I followed the counsel of Mark Browning, who I have great respect for, and has a finger on the pulse of the legislature. It's not about being political or right or having our agendas, it's about listening to the wise counsel of our senior VPs as part of our President's Cabinet, as we're down there trying to solicit funding from the legislation. So, I want to explain that, that's part of where that position came from. Couple other things. First off, Mr. Lyons very astutely pointed out that whatever zone I'm in, or any of the other trustees are in, the entire county will still be voting on us. So, Rathram still has the equal opportunity they had yesterday or tomorrow to put up a representative, same as Athol, Bayview, Spirit Lake, Harrison. That has not been diminished one, one little bit. If I'm in the county where I live, and I'm in the Rathram County area, just happens to be my zone, run against me. If you still got someone from Rathram, I mean, we had somebody four years ago when Paul ran. But other than that, we haven't had a lot of representation out of there. But it's still not precluded. Everybody still can run, and everybody still voted on by the entire county. You know, maybe it'd be different if Paul Matthews had won his election. The, you know, I'm going to use Judy's words against her for just a moment, because she keeps saying this, but she's disingenuous in what she does with it. This is Post Falls City, right here, okay? This is county. On the new map, this is county, and this is more of Post Falls City limits. So, more of Post Falls is with Post Falls on the new map. We keep the community more together. I have the county here where we'll get some growth, but you're also going to see Post Falls. This map best represents more of Post Falls as the city of Post Falls, right here. Right here, that is the city of Post Falls, more Post Falls. This is the county, this is Mr. Armstrong's farm and ranch area. I'm out here by dirt and grass and fields. Guy grows potatoes out here in Alfalfa, part of the county, okay? So, if we're keeping the cities together in the second map, Post Falls more, and growth, okay? Another thing, there was some disinformation put out, and there was accusations that said, any Board member that could possibly be affected by this, which technically is all five of us, should recuse themselves. Now, we know very clearly now the facts are that nobody from CSI or CWI recused themselves from the vote, even in the one district where they do have two trustees that overlap. Another thing, the colleges, at least one of them, looked at more than one map as their options. Had we picked the second map first, B, no one would have said a word. It was a random thing. It was based on the instructions given by Mr. Howard and President Dunlap, and then the map was drawn. If you had gone back, not trying to throw Dave Christensen under the map, under the bus, but when I talked to him and to the civilian GIS, Mr. Christensen said that when he and Mr. Howard talked, he might have given some different direction even for the formation of the map, and might have started it with a little different versus the wagon wheel with the hub. And so, he said, I can make the map look any way I want, just give me the instructions and the direction. So, there's a million ways that map could have been drawn. It's a random thing, in some ways, almost arbitrary. And if we had just quietly put those two maps up on the web, it'd have been like the other colleges, there'd have been half a dozen, oh, nice map, nothing really said, we'd have done a vote, and we'd have been done. But when you go out and you publicly throw a volatile word, like gerrymandering, that has so many negative connotations, and you start that, and you build that momentum, and you get these folks, whether it be from the Democratic, you know, group here in Coeur d'Alene, or from some of the selected instructors on the campus, or whoever, there's quite a constituency that really gets fomented here, and then we hear from it very vocally. Apparently have a lot of time on their hands to do this. So, that's a kind of an interesting situation. So, as we look at this, it became a political thing, which it shouldn't have. We made a bigger deal of it than we should have. The maps themselves could be moved many different ways. And again, we're, the entire counting is, the entire county is voting for all five. So, we're still accountable to the voters, to the constituents of the taxing district. So, I don't see where anybody's pulled anything over or changed anything. If we were just voting in this, in one of the cities, then maybe that'd be the case. But as Mr. Lyons pointed out, that's not how it's done, and we're not a congressional district, and there was no, you know, nothing there that favors anybody on the vote. So, I just want to correct a few of the, of things that were out there about how some of the things have been done. And we've done nothing wrong, and there was nothing out of the ordinary that we did, and not that different from any of our sister institutions. We just weren't very articulate in how we went about it. We should have thought through it a little more, maybe initially.
Yes, Ron.
Christie's made it perfectly clear that they, that not only her, but her fellow Board members and the administration were against this House Bill 514. She has the right as an elected official and as a Board member to voice her opinion. Frank Henderson, God rest his soul, was a leader and what you call a true statement, statesman for this political arena. And when Frank sees what's going on here today, he's probably turning over in his grave. I go back to this map, when you talk about the term gerrymandering, never heard that in context before this, and I'm getting pretty good at this. And when I talk about the term a salamander, I want you to, once again, to look at this map that was drawn up that shows that. And you tell me that here's the city of Coeur d'Alene's property lines, it goes right down here, that definitely defines the Coeur d'Alene, city Coeur d'Alene. And then you look at the city of Post Falls here, and you wonder, what is this little tail here? of Post Falls here, and you want to, what is this little tail here? That's where I live. When I saw that the first time, my reaction was exactly what I told you, which is why, is that go out there, "Well, you know, Ron, we got you in here, and, you know, blah, 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 and, you know, without, you won't be in my district." And so when you kind of talk about gerrymandering, you kind of go, "Okay, what does that mean?" Judy's real quick to hurry up and pass on her map, but these are the three maps that she drew up, showing her other options on how to draw that. And you look at these three maps and you say, "Well, gosh, it would have been nice for us to have a chance as a Board to look at all of the different options before we, before we voted." And again, as I went back to the State Board of Education and basically apologized for the dysfunction that we're causing them in holding this process down, they were very supportive by saying, "We will give you the needed time to get it right. We will give you what it takes to be able to make sure that when it's drawn, it is a fair representation." The first map was flawed because it didn't have enough input in it, and nothing against the people that did this, and please, the faculty member that drew this map did his job. But I believe that we need to go back and make sure we get it right, so that we do not make this political that isn't apolitical today.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Christie.
Thank you. From what I understand, this can't just be drawn randomly. There were, there were quite a few criteria on landmarks and natural borders, so it isn't, we don't have the ability to just randomly draw this. It's, it's actually quite, quite complicated, and our GIS person was able to pull it off with the first map. Some of the things that have been said, I just, I'm curious about. The letters, see, I don't belong to any, either political party. I don't go to any meetings from either side. I'm an independent voter, I'm not registered with either party. And so I guess I didn't recognize that letters came from Democrats, I wouldn't know the difference. They're citizens, all of you are citizens. I don't know who, who's what. Some of you are a little more vocal than others, I can pick you out, but, but most of the time, I don't have a clue who belongs to what. So Todd has said some things about if we would have just kept this from the public and been quiet about this and chosen one of those maps. For me, I've talked to him about this, that, and it's, it's been very difficult, very tense on this board for it to not be a personal agenda, come across as a personal attack. But for me, that, that's kind of a go-along-to-get-along approach. Just be quiet, and nobody will notice. And that's very difficult to do. That's not really how we're supposed to behave as elected officials. And then Ron's talked about the little tail, and that somebody said we needed to put you in there, Ron. I don't know who said that to you, I don't remember that conversation. Maybe you had that conversation with Bill Richards or with Ken, but I don't recall us telling you that we had to put you there to protect you. Because the first map that came out was, there was no knowledge of any trustees' residences. The second map, there were protections done for the trustees. And I just don't, I don't know that that's the kind of governing that we want to do. I just think that we, we need to be above the Board on some of these decisions. And it's not a political thing. You know, the CSI Board and the CWI Board had to go through the same thing. And they had three trustees that ended up in the same zone. And unfortunately, one of those trustees has been removed from the ability even run again. Now, both Todd and Ron have the ability to run. They're not, that, that's not being removed from them. Todd asked about, what's it really matter for someone from Ratham, they could run against him? And I think the difference is, is out there, because we moved the line, they will now be forced to run against an incumbent. And that is a little more difficult for anybody to run against an incumbent. So I, I think that that could probably bother some to them. But overall, the whole process didn't go as smoothly as it should, and so for me, I want to go back to the map with the most integrity.
Any other comments? Judy?
I'll go ahead. Ron, you highlighted something I should have spoken to earlier, and that was, as has been the case all along, anybody can suggest a plan. And in fact, I did suggest a couple others. After learning more about the parameters of the legislation, I particularly focused on Plan D and sent that to our Board Chair and to our members as another idea. After looking at it and working on the GIS numbers, it didn't look enough different, would do anything different than what we had before us, and so I was content to leave the two that we had before us. I think, in this case, the timeline, it can be longer if we wish. I don't see that we will achieve anything more than what we've already had before us. But I wanted to speak to the plans. You're right, I did have some others. I looked at them, and I didn't think they worked enough to take it back to the Board.
Just two comments. One is, I would suspect that most people realizing that I'm an educated man with advanced degrees in the engineering field, know that when I say random or arbitrary, it would certainly be within the parameters and the guidelines of the Nash, natural demarcations and the population and the rest of that. Not like I'd take a crayon and just kind of make five zones somewhere. And the second thing is, to the point is, you still don't seem to want to address, nobody does, the fact that, based on Judy's own criteria, Map B does a better job of keeping Post Falls, and integrity in keeping Post Falls together as a whole, with more of Post Falls in Post Falls, and some of the unincorporated county in the unincorporated county area and up towards Ratham. So by the criteria that's been established, B is actually a better map on that criteria, and better represents the community of Post Falls as a whole, so it stays, for the integrity of that community. I can't believe we keep, we really don't want to address that the B is a better map based on that criteria. So I'm going to point that out again, because we actually have a better map in B, and I stand by that map.
Mr. Chair. Just one final comment. I think that some citizens distrust public officials. They just do. And now more than ever. And some of them think that if we can rig the system, we will. And so I, I don't, that's not who I want to govern. I want to just be real careful that we don't have that kind of an appearance. There's no pressing reason for us to gerrymander any map. We have good map, and so I would ask the Board to adopt Map A.
It is generally my, my procedure to allow the Board to discuss these matters and then only step in at the end, so that I can hopefully give everybody an equal opportunity to talk. But this is an important issue. Quite frankly, the last time this was up, I cast the deciding vote. So what I would like to do is take a couple minutes and just review a little bit more of the procedure that got us here. Because not only were we put in a tight timeframe because of the time that the bill was signed, and the time that we had, the timing that we have to have it to the State Board. I value public input. I think this entire Board values public input. I mean, it was not, we agreed to do this motion for rehearing because there was some concern raised about the way we went through this, and we didn't hear from the public. The public, all of the public, both the, the college community as well as the greater community outside of the college grounds, the importance of their opinions is paramount to us. We're elected officials, you know? It's not just what we think we want, it's what we think the public, is best for the public, and best for the institution. And so we have to gather as much information as we possibly can from all the sources, and some of it is going to be offered, as it was before this hearing, with some reasoning and some logic with it. Some of it is just an opinion, some of it is an opinion maybe with some vitriol attached to it, which is totally unacceptable. There is so much of that in our public discourse today. There's so much, we can't, we don't seem to be able to have an honest, fair conversation without dragging in accusations and name-calling. And I'm, I'm pleased, quite frankly, that that has not occurred this evening. But we, as public officials, we endure all of that in order to make sure that we can get as much information as possible from the various components of our, of our community. So the value of this public input is, is of paramount importance to us. The history of the two maps, it's actually, there were, as you've already indicated, six maps. The first map, as Chair, when I looked at it and said, "We have to comply with this statute," I looked around for somebody to do it, and I went first to the county. And they have a GIS individual who does the county districting for the county commissioners, and in-house GIS specialist who draws the lines for the county commissioners and for the school districts. Because the school districts don't have that kind of talent in, in the, in their curriculum. The individual I talked to acquainted me with some of the complexities of how we draw these maps. You can't just draw a line on it. They got to use this GIS, Global Information System. They have every residence in the county located on a map, and they have the number of people that are living in these different residences to fairly close approximation. And they use that data in order to establish the zones. There were no zones in the county that approximated the five zones that we needed here at the Community College. For the commissioners, it was three, four school districts. It was geographic boundaries. There are all kinds of differences. So I asked that individual if he would be interested in drawing these, helping us draw the zones, and he indicated he would not. And I asked if I went to the county commissioners and got them to agree to let him do it, would he, would he be agreeable? He said he would prefer not to. And I asked him why, and he says, "Because it'd be a political nightmare." I think that was further prophetic, actually. So anyway, we had to look around for somebody else to do it. And there are a couple people who have retired from those occupations, but we also found out when I came back to the college that we have that kind of capability here on campus. And it is, quite frankly, a fairly mathematical computation that needs to be made with the assistance of the GIS data and computers. And so I met with, with Bill Richards and said, "Look, what I would like to see us do is try and create a zone map for five zones in the county. I would like, as a concept, if you could use somewhere around NIC as a target, but try and radiate some zones out into the county in five different directions for this purpose." I was concerned with this project, that we may well, if we had a strictly rural, rural zone in the southern part or the northern part of the state, get people who at some point in time wouldn't even want to run. So I wanted to see if we couldn't get zones that had some component of rural as well as urban population in them, but represented the, the county as a whole. That was Ken Howard's thinking. And, and so I just asked him to use that basic concept to see what he could do. The reality is that the population in this county is about 70% concentrated in a, in a beltway between Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene, and then going up into Hayden a little bit. I mean, most of the population is within a fairly small geographic area. So as you start to draw the lines, they can't be strictly zone lines, they've got to be lines that will get those equal population distributions. In addition to that, there are other rules that applied to, and I'm not familiar with all of them, but that applied to drawing these zones. I mean, you couldn't start a line in the middle of a wheat field someplace and then say it's going to turn east or west or something. They have to use geographic boundaries, they use section lines, they're trying to use predetermined geographic locations so that they can, people would know which zone they're in. Bill gave us his effort to generate that concept. The, the five zones radiating out from a central population area that met all the criteria of setting up voter districts. He came up with a map that actually turned out pretty good, because it was less than 1% deviation in all the zones. The statute requires that we have the zones as close as practicable. I think that was the word, wasn't it? Practicable? And, and so I took that map and I gave it to all the trustees. And I said, "Get back to me with any suggestions that you have, or any requests, or any, any changes you want to make." Time, as I've indicated, has been short. Everybody's busy, everybody's got jobs. They got back to me, but some of them got back to me on the date that we were going to meet. We weren't able to vet all of the maps. But the idea being that, it was made apparent to me in conversation at that time that there was a conflict and that Ron and Todd were in the same zone. Before that, there had not been any specific discussion about that, to the point where I said, "Okay, can we change the zones and not lose very much by way of the population density?" And Bill went back to work. He went back to work and he came up with Plan B. And so at the time we had that meeting, Plan A and Plan B were presented as being vetted because they now had zones in them that met the criteria of the statute, as well as the drafting criteria that was necessary in order to get this put together. You can use the word gerrymander if you want to. It's, it's, it's almost come across as a pejorative term, something that is meant to be derogatory. But it simply means you've moved a line in order to favor some group or individual, or to disfavor some group. And so it's not illegal. There are parameters for it. And the parameters, I asked Mark to do some research on it so that we could acquaint everybody with the parameters on what gerrymandering is and when it becomes illegal. So I think what we had before us is a choice. The gerrymandering, if you want to call it that, was, was done, in my mind, to protect one of, or two of the, of the trustees. The question gets to be, is it wrong? Is it something, would something else be better for the institution? And, and how, what should we do? I feel that our role here is to listen, to study as much as possible to different alternatives. The suggestion was made that the, that the population density maps or data is stale because it came from the last census. True. But it's the best data we have, and all of the data that we're required to look at under the statute. The statute requires that we have five zones. There are things that the statute requires that we're just stuck with. Fact is, we're stuck with the whole statute, and I'm not particularly happy with that. But the, the whole plan that it has been presented to us, I think, is full of the potential for unintended consequences. When you think about the fact that we have five zones, the only requirement is that a trustee who, or somebody who wants to run for trustee, live in the zone. You have to be a resident of the zone, but the entire county, as has been pointed out a couple of times, the entire county votes for all five trustees. Potentially, we could have no trustees run in a district, or in a zone. And then we're going to have to go through a process of having to appoint them, and it's possible to do it, but we wouldn't have had to do it without, before we had this statute. We could have three people or four people run in the same zone, and the entire county votes, and elect somebody that that zone really doesn't want to have in their zone as a representative. I mean, there are potential things that are going to crop up, but all of that is, is past. And we are now stuck with, what's the best way to create these zones for the betterment of, of the county, and for the college, and for the residents? The last time we voted on this, I supported Plan B, because in my judgment, at the, at the time, I don't have as much information as I have now, but at the time, I felt, and I still have a strong feeling, that the voters should decide these issues. That leaving all of the trustees on the map and letting the voters vote would determine who survives and who doesn't. But there are other concerns also. We did, Ron said he talked to the State Board of Education, as did I. The, the State Board of Education indicated that they would give us, say, C-. The State Board of Education indicated that they would give us, Stacy Bent indicated they would give us a couple days extra to get our plan in for the agenda, but they're not going to move, they're not going to hold a special meeting for us, nor are they going to delay their meeting. So we have to get this material in to them within the next seven to 10 days. And the idea of sending this back, one of the proposals has been, send it back and start over again. And quite frankly, I don't see that as a viable solution. I think that we don't have the time to do it, and I don't know that we're going to be confronted with any better choices. We have two choices. We have one with, where we have a zone that conflicts for two trustees, so we may have conflicts come up with other choices. We have one zone map that there are no conflicts. We've had five maps presented in sketch form. We've tried to vet three of those, a couple of them were withdrawn by Ron and by Judy. And ultimately, they were all withdrawn except for these two, because there are difficulties in trying to find a better solution than what we have. One of these two is going to have to be our solution, in my judgment. So having said all that, this is always a difficult decision, because we're sitting here trying to make a decision that not just is good for this board individually, but is good for the community. There is a potential that if we drop a map with zones on it and send it down to the State Board of Education, and they send it to their attorneys, their attorneys may interpret the statute as requiring that if there's any, that there should be, not be divided to protect a particular political party or a particular incumbent, which is the condition on a different statute dealing with legislative districts. But nonetheless, it is a zoning statute. And they may decide that we're in violation of that, and they'd send it back to us to redo it. There may be other questions about it, I don't know. But I want us to go down to the State Board of Education with a plan that gets done and gets us on the way to getting a clear path to an election ahead of us. So I think that our job tonight is to select either A or B and move forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd call for the question.
Okay, the question's been called for. The motion is to adopt Plan A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote in favor. All opposed?
Nay.
Todd?
I said nay, sir.
Nay? Plan A is adopted, and Plan B is rejected. Yes, Todd?
I was afraid of this. I'm going to offer up my resignation on this board of trustees as of now, that I will walk away knowing that I fought hard for this budget to be balanced every single year. And in the last four years, we haven't raised the taxes to our local taxpayers. Why did I do that? You can see the fight that we had over something about a line in a, on a map, and how complicated that is. I did it because you guys elected me to do this job. I fought against a proposed sports arena that would have been a financial burden to our community, and fought hard, and it was an ugly fight. Why did I do that? Because that's what I was elected to do. We have collected forgone taxes from our taxpayers going back 10 years ago, or whatever it was, with an understanding that we're going to buy the property, and we still use that money today. The biggest fear I've had since I've been on the board is that we'll raid that money for other than what it was intended for. And two or three times, we've had heated debates as a board to do that. I fought against the CTE campus going, staying on the, next to the river. Didn't make any sense to me. So I fought for what I thought was right for the community. And today, they will say that was probably one of the more foresighted decisions that's ever been made. But I'll guarantee you that this was against what this institution stood for at the time. And meeting after meeting, they sent teams of them to do that. I always fought for the students first and the taxpayers second. I didn't fight for the administration, for the faculty. They got a whole army here fighting for them. And what do we do? We don't have people show up here at the board meetings, we don't have people there defending that, and it makes it a pretty lonely fight most of the time. I've worked hard to understand this institution and what it stands for. I have three kids that have gone to this educational institution. I support higher education. Over the last two months, I spent 30-plus hours trying to pick a new president to replace Mr. Dunlap, who has done an incredible job here. And I think we've got a really good president. So I feel like leaving here, that I've done my job to the best of my ability. For the last four years, I've watched how we fight against each other, and then we get these statements. Every time that you disagree with this institution, here comes a name-calling. And you know what? My poor wife sits in these meetings, and she said, "They hate you, because you tell them what you think." I tell them what the taxpayers and what the people think. So I'll go back to doing what I love to do more than anything, which is to serve my community. I'll go back to fighting for those that can't fight for themselves. And I'll leave the politics to NIC. And as Henry Kissinger said to the students at Harvard, "Politics on the university's campus are the worst of all kinds of politics, because the stakes are so small." I say that's not true. I agree with the first part, that the politics at universities are the worst politics of all kinds, but the stakes are too high. These are our kids. These are our students that need an institution to get behind them and help them. And for that, I've given everything I had. I will stay through the budgeting process, but this educational institution won.
So is this where I'm not happy I get to call for a revote, another special meeting?
Yes, you can.
You know what? We've done this for over three and a half years, and we've had a lot of votes, and I've been on the losing end of a lot of votes, even four to one. And I've had to accept all those votes. So I'm very disappointed that we were giving special consideration in the way this has gone down, and who gets to request. It's amazing how it just mobilizes the masses when certain requests are made from certain trustees. And I feel it's been unequally yoked, and I questioned the whole process of the fact that we're here during the special meeting, that we did a special vote, we had a decision, the decision was made. There was nothing illegal, immoral, or unethical about the decision we made. And here we are, looking foolish around the state, and certainly in our local area, because we just undid what we did. So we might as well just publicly say, "Oh, gosh, we either made a mistake, or we were just foolhardy, or shame on us." Wow, I guess, Wes, that we just admitted to, that we were incompetent? That what we did initially was wrong? I struggle with that, sir, I do. I struggle with that, the decision was made. I've never had the opportunity as a board member to ever undo anything here or redo anything. But I'm...
With all due respect, Todd, this is what's best for me. I want to personally thank Joe Dunlap for his leadership. I think you've done an incredible job here. Thank you so much, Mr. Dunlap. And to Mark Lyons, thank you for your wise counsel, I appreciate you. And Ken, thank you for your leadership as a board. Thank you, Christie and Judy, for what you've done. It's been my pleasure to serve this community, and someday, who knows? But for right now, I'm tired. I'm tired of all the politics associated with the educational institution. So thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Yeah, Christie.
Well, Ron, I appreciate your, all of what you had to say. You had kind of hinted that this was taxing, to say the least, but I want you to know that I've appreciated your leadership on this board. We've become good friends through this, and I don't want to see you go. I'd like you to reconsider, because I think you do add a lot of value to the board. And, you know, we do have, we've had a number of decisions, and you named them. And, you know, the sports arena, the CTE facility, different budgets, arguments, and you have been a valuable resource through all of that. And we're not always going to see eye to eye on everything, but you do bring good insight to the board, so I would hope you'd reconsider.
Appreciate that, Christie, but you know what? I don't see, I've been, I go to your educational trustee meetings, and I see these people that were hand-selected as trustees, I see these people that are institutional grown up in, and then I see the handful of us that were elected by the public to fight for this institution. And it's two different things. This is, this is magic, what we've done here, that when we talk about, in this letter, you don't know what's in this letter, but this letter started up with, "We're going to now challenge the term shared versus participatory governance." We want to take that. That's part of, started this letter and this fight. And this is just a fight that I can just see, it's just going to be another fight, and that when you've got, Todd and I are the two people that look at things a little bit different. And Ken, you voted our way, I appreciate your leadership on that. And in the case of the CTE, it's, Christie, you showed leadership, and you two have been incredible about making a tough decision. But it shouldn't be tough to make a tough decision, it should be easier to make the right decision when it comes to the students and the taxpayers of this community. So I don't want to ramble anymore. So, thank you.
Well, Ron, let me, I'm going to ask you to reconsider your comment about resigning. You may want to, I mean, I can understand, believe me. The public does not understand, all right, what the trustees are asked to do in terms of commitment of time and energy, and especially in sometimes when we're selecting new presidents and we've got issues like this. You get paid nothing for this, except you get criticized every time you do something. And you cannot make a decision without receiving criticism from someone. Someone is always standing in a position to criticize you, and that's part of taking on the roll, and it is difficult. But it is with the genuine heartfelt feelings of all of us that we're here for the betterment of the college. And we have disagreements based upon that understanding. And when the agreement is all done, that we move forward to the next step of doing the best thing for the institution, and you've always been here for that. So I would hope that you would reconsider that. And, you know, I wish there was some way, quite frankly, that we could undo the statute. And I guess we could have undone it with zoning, but I think we would have stepped right back in it with some other group that was in disagreement. So it's a decision we're going to have to live with, and I would hope that both of you can find a way to continue to contribute. Both of you have contributed substantially, not just to NIC, but to the community. And so, I would hate to see this as an experience that leaves you with a bad taste in your mouth. You're appreciated. It is not that at all. It's just that we find ourselves again in a disagreement.
Sure makes me feel welcomed. Looking forward to continuing to work with the board.
No, I want, I didn't hear you say that you wanted to resign. I was telling Ron, "Don't resign, please."
No, no, I understand. I'm just, it's going to be interesting.
All right. We have our, we have our single agenda item has been resolved, and there are no more discussion, we are adjourned.